Good evening, everybody, and welcome to a regular meeting of the Moscow City Council. It's June 17th, 2024. Gina?
Welcome, all of you, to our unseasonably cool City Council meeting evening. If you would stand, if you're able, and do the pledge of allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. First up tonight is the consent agenda, which consists of items previously vetted by Public Works and Finance or Administrative Committee and consists of primarily housekeeping items or non-controversial items, but any item can be pulled for separate consideration by any member of the council.
Your Honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, Julia?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Drew?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
Very good. Onto the regular agenda. And at this time, for the next 15 minutes in three-minute increments, if any member of the public has anything to talk to us about of a general nature that's not on tonight's agenda nor pending before planning and zoning or the Board of Adjustment, please come up, give your name, address, and tell us what's on your mind. Any takers tonight? Okay. No stampedes at the podium. Next up is Dominion Way Street Name Approval. Todd Drage is going to talk to us about that. Go for it.
Appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we're here today to talk about naming of the street associated with the Logos Project. Quick location and background. In August of 2016, Moscow Board of Adjustment approved initial use permit for the Logos Project. The CUP requested to construct school and sports facilities, a church, and public improvements to support these items. The public improvements included a public minor arterial street, shown here, circled in blue. The right-of-way dedication for the street was approved by council on August 7th of 2023. However, the street name was not approved at that time. Typically, street names are done through the plating process. Staff works with the applicant through that process, and then it provides recommendation to council for its approval. This street was created through right-of-way dedication, and so it didn't go through that official process. So we're here today to present this item, to officially request the approval of the name Dominion Way, as requested by the project proponent. And so part of that process, either through plating or through right-of-way dedication, street naming, staff evaluates street names with some guidelines. And so I'd like to just present those guidelines for you real quick here today. First one, there shall be no duplication of existing names. Names of similar pronunciation and/or spelling shall be prohibited, such as Briar Lane or Briar Lane, B-R-I-A-R, B-R-I-E-R. Variations of the same name with a different street designation shall be prohibited, such as Birch Street, Birch Road, and Birch Drive. Proposed public street names, either by new plat or requested naming, may not reference the names of individual persons, businesses, or organizations, except those with substantial historic or civic significance as determined by City Council. No street name shall consist of more than two words or contain more than 15 characters, including spaces. No street name shall contain the words north, south, east, or west, or any combination thereof within the street name. When a street changes directions by approximately 90 degrees, or any other significant geographic cue exists, the street name shall change. No new street shall have more than one name. And then a new street that has less than 125-foot centerline alignment offset from an existing street should continue with the same street name. A new street that has more than 125-foot centerline alignment offset shall have a new street name. And so initially, the proponent requested the street be named Logos Street. Staff evaluated that against guidelines and requested the new names. And so they came back with Dominion Way. As Dominion Way meets all of those guidelines, staff recommends approval. And with that, I can stand for any question. And then we have a member of Logos here, Mr. Whitney, that can answer questions as well.
The only question, Todd, you did a great job with the Public Works and Finance as well as tonight. Since this is, this ties into Mountain View Road, this, one of the reasons that this wouldn't be fitting to be named Mountain View or some variation of it is because of the turn in the road and it being Mountain View Road already turning into Mountain View Street and the risk of confusion. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. So Mountain View continues on that 90, and so this, this road heads south and needs a new name.
Cool. Thank you.
Bryce?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And thank you, Todd. And again, thanks for walking us through this. As we discussed last week in Public Works and Finance, I have reservations of approving this for a variety of reasons. I think the word Dominion just has a pretty heavily weighted context to it. And I was looking at the definitions, which I relayed last week at Public Works and Finance. The definition of Dominion is sovereignty or control, the territory of a sovereign or government. And then I was curious, I looked up synonyms for Dominion. They include, but are not limited to supremacy, ascendancy, dominance, superiority, preeminence, authority, mastery, control, command, et cetera. And so in thinking about kind of like the weight of all of those words, it makes me nervous to recommend approval on this, especially considering all of the streets that we have in our street directory that have no kind of similar weight or feel as Dominion. And I just would want to stay more consistent with kind of the, maybe precedent we've already set as opposed to opening up this new door that could, that could lead to potentially some, some words that maybe are more uncomfortable. So with that being said, I know that they follow the guidelines, which I'm appreciative of, but I, I am not, I intend to approve, just for the record. So. And I'm curious to what my other colleagues think on the matter as well. So.
I would say, if I may?
You may.
That, all right, I'll get closer. You know, this is, this is, this is a difficult thing to have this as proposed as a name because of the reasons that Councilmember Blankenship has mentioned. But it does meet the guidelines, so I feel a little bit like we're stuck with it. But I would like to see the city go back and revise those guidelines in the future and try to tighten that up and just have a, a clearer, simpler version of what street names can be.
Gina?
I, I'm not particularly bothered by the word Dominion. I tend to be a little bit more of a circumspect thinker. That's respectfully said. I don't, I don't have the same heartburn that Warbonnet would bring as well. And we, and that's not, I can't claim credit for that wisdom, but I can use it. They did meet all, the guidelines are met. And so in my mind, this is a less than optimal, optimal name, but I, I'm in favor of approving it.
Sandra?
Yes. I agree completely with what Gina said. I don't like it very much. I don't like the context of it. I don't like it for all the reasons Bryce said. I also looked up some definitions, and it left me feeling not great. But then I also had to remember that when Indian Hills went in, that was not great, and that went through, and that also still doesn't sit right, but it met the criteria. Warbonnet is pretty awful. Really, not even pretty awful. It's awful. It's an awful name for so many reasons. It does meet the criteria, and that's, I would say, one of the hardest things about our job is when everything is correct and everything is right, just because you don't like it, how it sounds, how it feels. It's still right. And so I think we have to go with it. And I would go with what Julia said as well, that maybe we can look at different ways to come up with a better consensus on how a name is, because a lot of those are pretty tough to take going through town.
Drew?
Yeah, I think there's, like usual, some wisdom come behind the bench here. I agree with, I see all viewpoints on this. I have personal opinions, but my job as a council member is not, is to think of the best interest of the city. And so I think what Julie has said is, it makes sense. And where we draw the line in the sand is, it meets the requirements. And so when, when this is called to an action, you will see how I vote. So.
I am going to disagree. There are checks and balances in a system on purpose. It is within the purview, including in the, and on Public Works, these comments, I made these same comments. It is within the council's jurisdiction. I have no qualms with the staff recommendation. It does meet all the criteria. However, I was elected and on the promise that I would create a more inclusive and welcoming town, and this is a check in our system to allow us to vet it. And I think it's appropriate for us to ask for additional direction in the code. My understanding is there is some draft code to further refine and massage what I think has been untouched in terms of some of these guidances for a long time. And so I'm game to also ask for that. But I, I'm not a fan, and it is, and it is here before us for us to make a decision, and staff would not ask us for opinion if we did not, I'm sorry, staff wouldn't, this mechanism would not be in place for us to review it if all we were supposed to do was rubber stamp every single staff recommendation. And so I think it is well within our, it is well within our role. It is appropriate. It's a check to the system. And in the best interest of the city, to your point, Bryce, or I'm sorry, Drew, I'm, I don't think this name is in the best interest of further growth on the east side of town and beyond, whatever, you know, whatever comes beyond this road. So I, I am not a fan, and I, I would like to see the applicant provide other names, because I don't think it is appropriate. It isn't, I am concerned about the message it sends based on the definition alone. And again, it is within our purview to ask for something else and not approve it.
Motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, and I don't know quite how to, how to word this motion, so feel free to, friendly amendments, welcome, send this name proposal back to the applicant and request alternatives. Period.
We just have to reject, if you want to reject?
Well, I want to clarify, as far as rejecting, I mean, they will still have to come, it can't go unnamed, right?
Correct.
Okay, so let me, if, if it's appropriate for a friendly amendment to then say, yeah, I move that we deny the street name as proposed.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded. Julia?
Can you, so the move is to deny the applicant?
Correct.
Thank you. I just want to.
Yeah, the motion, the motion, as I understand, is to deny the requested street name, and then the applicant would be requested to bring other alternatives forward to the council's consideration.
That is what I'm looking for, yes.
Thank you. I just.
No.
Bryce?
Yes.
Gina?
No.
Haley?
Aye.
Sandra?
No.
Drew?
No.
Okay, that motion fails. We need another motion for something.
Your Honor, I move that we approve the street name Dominion Way.
Is there a second? What happens?
So there's no motion?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, yes. Right.
So without a motion, essentially, we're at the same place as a motion that was previously rejected of.
So it's not being, so yeah, so the council's taken no action to approve the street name, so it remains unapproved at this point in time. I guess I'd encourage further deliberation and some resolution from the council.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, I guess I'm trying to understand the reservation of us asking for alternatives from this applicant. And so that, that is what I'm looking for. It will, I, but I'm not sure I understand. It seems like if Gina's motion died without a second, we are not enthusiastic about it. And so I'm trying to understand what we want from this, because that tells me that we don't have a majority who are interested in as presented.
Drew?
I guess for more deliberation, I recognize staff might not be able to speak to this at this time, but in many minutes and past approvals for street names, Sandra brought up one about Indian Hills, correct? What in our history have we, when have names been denied? Typically, when we bring things before council, we give a history of a variety of things. I'm curious. I recognize that I did not ask you this beforehand, Todd, and so it puts you in a, on a spot, and so I apologize, but.
So I might have a little more history than Todd does on that subject. Honestly, the only times we've requested changes in street names typically have been where an applicant may submit a subdivision that has a name that goes around that kind of 90-degree bend. And so we've asked them to change the street name at that bend so we can keep with our east, west, and north, south numbering system. It's never been based on the name itself. We did, there was maybe a slight modification to Lanny Lane as part of the Peekaboo Estates, because that was nearby Landy Lane. And so is it Lanny Drive? Or, so we did make a modification, and that was only because of the proximity and the similar pronunciation of those two names. And it was just a slight modification. Beyond that, in the, you know, 22 years I've been here, I don't know that we've outright denied a name based on the word. I'm not sure there were any, any that, that rose to that level. Indian Hills was established back in the 70s, and so we've had certainly subdivision plats that have contained that, but it's been a continuation of the existing named street. But I'm not aware of any other than just to meet our convention and our standards for the street going around a 90-degree corner, or just that one time with Lanny and Landy that was a little too close. Have we really weighed in on modification of street names? Usually, again, that's, as Todd talked about, it's usually during the plating process. P&amp;Z is the entity that reviews street names as it comes through in the subdivision plat. So most of the time, that is already addressed by the time it gets to the council. But there's no time that I have a recollection of P&amp;Z or council level that we've had a name that was objectionable that the council did not accept.
In terms of, I would say, the deliberation question, for me, it really comes down to, I've been following council since I moved here, which I think is 2007. I'd never seen a name come up to council. And so while I didn't feel comfortable voting completely no, I also don't feel comfortable seconding or moving forward. And I don't know what that direction is. And so in my mind, my direction is to not do anything at this point and let, let whatever happens next, happens next, because I don't know what the roadmap is for this. That was no pun intended, sorry. I don't know what is next, and I'm interested to know what is next. And so I don't know what that looks like. I've never been here before.
It would seem that that would mean that you have to go back to another motion to reject and allow the applicant to supply a new name is where everybody is circling back to.
And does that come back to us? Does that go to planning and zoning?
It would just go to the council, because there's no subdivision plat involved here. That's why this one is coming directly to the council. There's no plat. It's just, it was a dedication and acceptance. It was the development of a singular piece of property that did not require division, so it did not go through planning and zoning in that sense. So no, it would be, if, if the council doesn't approve the name tonight, then it would be back to the applicant to make another proposal for the council's consideration.
And so just to, let me follow up on that, Bryce. Sorry, thank you. And so what, if it were to go to planning, what's the process with that? Are they just presented a name? Is there a discussion about a name? I've never been to that portion of planning and zoning before.
So if it's a planning zoning, it's through a subdivision plat review.
Right, so they already have a name attached.
Correct. Yeah, the plats always come presented with names on the streets. So that's always been the developer's prerogative, is to present the street names for the city's consideration.
Yeah, and thanks for kind of answering these questions here, Bill. And I think, like, clearly, like, since this has not been encountered by council yet, or at least in kind of like our memory, then it matters, right? And so I think for me, again, my reservation of proceeding just by way of following the guidelines for, for naming this street is a really dangerous, pardon the language, it's a, I think it's a, it's a, I think it's a dangerous precedent to set, because there could be other names that come before us that have followed the lines, and we've already just approved this. Or if we approve this, then we've already set that precedent to just keep, keep that in, in, keep that in our decision-making processes. So clearly, it seems that most of us, in some capacity or another, have a reservation about this, and I think we take that seriously. And we, again, ask the applicant to submit new names, because if we're not comfortable moving forward on it, just to move forward on it, then that matters. And like, it's uncomfy, and we don't know, because we've never been in this position before. So, so again, I, I, I would propose for the applicant to, to think of alternative names than Dominion Way.
Sorry, but what makes you think you will like them?
Well, that's part of the process, right? That's part of the process. So.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. And Todd, can you toggle back to the criteria? Just to recap, when it, when the plating conversation happened, it had Logos driveway street as a placeholder. And my understanding is, the reason it is, Logos was not, was, was advised, the applicant was advised to find a name other than Logos Street was because specifically that it is tied to an organization. Is that right? We, that, within this code as defined, that was why Logos staff asked for the applicant to find something other than Logos?
Correct. Generally, we don't like to see street names named after particular entities or institutions, because that can get to, because those change over time, so we don't want a Walmart Way or a Home Depot Street. Are we trying to move away from individual identities or institutions or commercial entities?
And, Mr. Mayor, I was just going to add, I mean, it is a unicorn issue. It is, it is not, it is fascinating that even in our 22, our institutional knowledge in bill in 22 years that this order of operations has not come before council. Again, I say, this is, the reason it is coming to us, because it is a, a process that we are able to review staff recommendation and choose if that's the direction we want to go or not. I'm thinking through the past couple of subdivisions, and it's, it, none of the names that have come that I can think of in the past handful that have been platted stray into this sort of abstract naming territory. It's things like, it's Idaho landmarks, it's names, it's flowers, it's trees, it's, I'm, and this also does not fit within what we've been hearing from planning and zoning. And again, I don't know what sort of negotiations those contractors have to go through to give those sorts of, or, you know, if they start with Confederate Way or something, and then they have to dance it back to tree territory. Like, I don't know what those minutia are, but I, this is before us, because we, we have agency. We have been elected to make a choice that is best for Moscow. And in my purview, in my opinion, the name as presented is not what is best for Moscow, and with what this precedent it could set for other people who bring names forward. So I'd like to see other options.
Is Gina's motion still on the table?
It failed for lack of a second.
For lack of a second.
Not really.
Mr. Mayor and Lori, am I, am I able to make the same motion even though it died? Like, am I able to make a motion to deny?
Yes.
Great. Mr. Mayor, I move that we deny the street name as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded. Okay, we've had pretty good discussion. So Bryce?
Yes.
Drew?
No.
Gina?
No.
Haley?
Yes, to sending it back.
Sandra?
No.
Julia?
No.
Okay, that goes away again. Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I recommend we approve to give a name, Dominion Way, to, for approval for tonight.
So to approve the requested street name? Okay.
Did you say for temporary approval?
No.
To approve?
To approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure.
If it would appease my fellow council members, is the, is the concern that Dominion goes away and something else comes back? I guess I'm trying to understand if they gave us a menu of three things to choose from, and Dominion happened to be on it, if it would make anyone feel any better. And I'm not sure if we're able. Okay, great.
Okay, Sandra?
I got lost in the yes and no's, Bill.
Yeah, so the motion on the floor that's been seconded is to approve the requested street name.
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Bryce?
No.
Drew?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
And Haley?
No. Hard no.
Okay, that passes, so the street name is approved.
And I just want to reiterate that I would love for the staff to redraft this policy and to have it come before council so that we can not get in this situation again.
Yes.
I agree.
Thank you.
Seems to be a move by council to request staff to revise the policy.
And, Mr. Mayor, but can I ask, what, what in the policy beyond that would have, the explicit ability for, for council to say yes or no to something, gives final approval? The city council gives final approval, prawn recommendation. I'm confused. What would have changed? I mean, I'm so confused, because this is the, we can't possibly pencil in all the words you don't want to see in a street name.
No, but it could be something as easy as requesting three options.
Fair enough.
Or to narrow it down to trees and flowers.
There's a lot of trees and flowers.
I love that idea. Like, I was just in Genesee, all the streets are tree names. It's great.
Species of wheat.
Species of wheat. We could include that.
Okay, finishing up that, so now we move on to statewide electronic ticketing grant award from Lisa Anderson.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
By the way, we appreciate the sartorial impeccability you present to us tonight.
That means nice tie.
Good evening, council.
Hi, Lisa. Hi, how are you?
I'm good. I'm good. Thank you for asking. This item came before you in January, and this was, excuse me, to purchase what we call e-ticketing equipment for the police vehicles. And when we first came to you back in January, we were looking for six units. And at that time, we looked at the total of, we asked not to exceed 26,000. However, since that time, IS worked with the police department, and we found that the inventory that we had on hand of what was installed in the cars right now, since that time, we had two units go down. One was repaired, one wasn't able to be repaired. And then also, we didn't know that they made units for motorcycles at that point in time, and they do. And then also, to be able to have a system within not just the police cars, but also the other units that do ticketing, such as traffic and for the, can't think of the name, animal control. Thank you. And so that's why we're coming forward to you. We submitted the request and got approval like in the same day, but it exceeded the amount that we had asked for previously in the number of units. So I'm here before you today requesting to have you approve the request for 45,000. And just want to make sure that you understand, they gave us a total for 45,000. There's a 25% match, but we won't use that much grant money. It'll be right around 33,750 with the match. And the match can include cash or in-kind services for the installations. And there is the full amount needed in this year's budget under IS for the police department.
My one question, Lisa, is, and maybe you're answering that as far as like it, it being budgeted in the IS, this is one of the things that we're able to do in-house, both between the city shop and from our own IT folks internally, as far as the deployment.
Most of the vehicles already have the brackets and the wiring for the installation. We do have two new police cars coming, though, that will need a full setup. We do have two new police cars coming, though, that will need a full setup. And then, um, it's a unique setup for the, um, for the motorcycle. Yeah.
I move that we approve the acceptance of a grant award. I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. I'll just second and ask my question. You're good.
I move that we approve the acceptance of a grant award from the Office of Highway Safety for the statewide electronic ticketing equipment program for 45,000 dollars.
God.
Did I write that?
That's a lot. Okay, now my question, please.
And that was a second.
Yeah, it was. It was a laughing second. Um, you, you mentioned something in your introduction about, we received two units, one could be repaired, and one's already...
We had two units that went out, and we were able to repair one and not the other.
So we've already, we've already had a fail in those that we bought?
But they were very old. We had a grant...
Those are your old units.
The old units, not the ones where...
Correct.
Okay, so the replacing units are going to be new and not crap out in the first six months?
Yes.
Oh, awesome.
Sorry about that.
Okay, I'm gonna second it again, just for that.
Crap out's a technical term, right?
Yes, it is. I almost said another...
What I was saying is that since we had done the approval in January, we had had a couple units. By the time we got to the point where we knew that we needed more, we'd already had, thought we had lost two, but it was really one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Haley?
Aye.
Drew?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Might as well just stay there. So next up is Water Smart Small Scale Water Efficiency Grant Application. Lisa backed up by Evan Tamar.
So Evan's going to do a, a brief overview of where we are with this project, and then I will come up and ask for the request for the grant application.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Staff. I'm Evan Tamar, the Public Utility Manager with the city. Um, I was just going to, yeah, before Lisa talks about the grant that we are trying to apply for, the Advanced Metering Infrastructure Meter Replacement Project. So we, at this point, the city is currently collecting data on all of our meters, and we do that either by manual collection, or by drive-by method. Um, we do this on a monthly basis. The majority of the meters that we do have in the ground currently are, are fairly antiquated. And to streamline this process and replace older meters, we want to implement an advanced metering infrastructure platform. And so to do that, we issued a request for proposals, and have solicited that nationwide, so we can get responses back, um, to see what, what we get from qualified vendors. And so what is AMI? AMI is Advanced Metering Infrastructure. It's a two-way communication device on each meter that collects and sends consumption data over a fixed network at set increments, but also allows direct remote interaction from the city, as well as to collect valuable data such as leak detection, instantly read consumption, a customer portal that provides consumption data, and the ability to issue The project drivers, the city expects to receive numerous benefits from an AMI program. The key AMI project justification that we have identified, water conservation, implementation of an AMI platform can save on average one to six percent of water, so 1% would be roughly 7 million gallons on the low end, so that would be fantastic. That's just by how, you know, rapid we can detect a leak in the system and get notification. So timely leak detection, improved customer service, that's due to the customers being able to have the ability to check in on their consumption. And transparent claim resolution and billing disputes, if those do arise. Enhanced personnel safety, that's from, you know, not having to obviously be on the road or walking out, um, to collect meter data, and as well as not having to access meter vaults that can be confined space entries. And then greenhouse gas reduction. We drive on average about 3,000 miles to collect, to collect meters, meter data, so we would be able to alleviate any of that, um, driving around the city. We would also be able to, if we're saving the water, pumping out of the wells less, so having less demand on those wells. Um, the, so we issued the RFP on May 20th, so last month. The proposals are due this Friday, and then we will be reviewing them by a selection committee in the, in the coming weeks. One of the big components with this, with this RFP was that we wanted, we needed to spread the cost over roughly a seven-year period, because meters can be upwards of 450 to 500 dollars per meter. And that's, that, the, the meters can consist of multiple, you know, types of technology. With this RFP, we opened it up to have a massive amount of vendors be able to qualify for it. So that really gives us, you know, the most competitive advantage to getting what we can. The meter details, we're looking for a dual-band radio or cellular platform. They will have to do a propagation study to ensure that they can get coverage for our area, especially with the hills. We have a variety of meter vaults and, and material to, to cover those meters, so we want to ensure that they can, they will work correctly. We are looking for solid-state measurement, that's ultrasonic or magnetic technology. And then we want them to include info codes such as leak, burst, reverse, dry tamper, or low battery. And we are asking that they have a 20-year battery life as well. That's pretty much, they come with 10-year minimum, and industry, that's industry standard, and then they come with a prorated battery life. And you can change, your battery life is dependent on how much feedback you want, how much information you want back from those meters. And then we're asking for a customer portal as well. The biggest component is that we would like it to be, have single sign-on capability with our billing platform. And that is all I have for you guys. Do you guys have any questions regarding the AMI RFP?
Sorry.
Go for it.
I was just wondering, um, do you know, are there other cities that are using this? And it's been successful in doing all the things they wanted it to do?
Yeah, absolutely. The, the meters are, the technology is, is really incredible. It's, 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 it's advanced pretty rapidly. A lot of cities are currently sitting on the radio platform, so where they're installing a small collector device on various water tanks, and that's been a pretty tried and true technology. Cellular is a rather newer technology that is, that still works really well. You can do a combination of both, but yeah, they, they work really well. They don't see a whole lot of, uh, interaction with the customer portals, even though a lot of cities are starting to offer those. But, but they are an incredible tool for the people that do want to utilize them. But yeah, they, they save a lot of staff time, they allow, they allow people to have timely responses to, you know, the, the leaks that we are seeing, almost on a daily basis, we can, we can start catching that stuff. And so right now, we're kind of, you know, we see that data, we collect that data, and then we, we touch base with the resident, so we have, you know, a little bit of a lapse in time of when somebody does have a leak and experiences, something rather, you know, minimal. And so we'd be able to catch that a lot quicker.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Drew?
Um, I could have missed it, and so I apologize if it's, it's in there, there's some, there's some information and some technical specs. And so I want to make sure I'm understanding the application, and then the long-term vitality of going this direction. So, consumer, like, resident will get this, right? What is, after the grant, I'm trying to understand, will that be a cost to the resident, um, long-term, as we go on?
Yeah, great question. So we currently purchase meters on an annual basis, just meters that are, you know, failing. And, and so it's, it's always a perpetual cost that we have budgeted into our, into our operations budget. So it would be, we would have, the, we're expecting the lifecycle to be roughly 20 years for the meter, so we would be implementing it over seven years. We have it, it's approved in the budget to be able to purchase, you know, a lot of amount in those first seven years. And so really, the cost would be upfront in those first seven years. We wouldn't have, we, the only, we could have potential perpetual costs with meter data management systems. Those are, you know, relatively low, roughly $10,000 annually, depending on how many meter counts were, we have in the system. And, and then a small fee for a customer portal, depending on how, you know, much notification we want to utilize in that process, you know, whether we're sending push notifications or not. And then, and then also having, having, having the, the continued cost of, of the cellular platform, if we do go cellular.
Yeah, and so if I'm understanding, like, I recognize where we're purchasing meters, and we're purchasing new technology, that I'm all for efficiency, especially for staff, right? There's, there's a lot of benefits there, and especially of, like, procuring water better, right? But the, with new technology also means a new price tag. What, what is, what, what's the, I'm just trying to figure out what the difference is with, and how this relates to the, the grant?
Yeah. Mayor, council, uh, yeah, real excited about this project, just to touch on that a little bit further. So, as Evan covered very effectively, these, these, the industry is headed in this direction. This is where new metering is going. And so we, we have cost to replace meters anyway. Meters are just like any other wearing item in our system. It wears out, it has an ROI, and so we, we have to have a timeframe in which we replace meters regardless. The new technologies, you indicate, new technology is always more expensive. You know, your cell phone that you bought 10 years ago is less expensive than the cell phone that you buy today.
I like my flip phone.
So, so, some of the, so, uh, there are a couple different aspects of this. One is that the, the, this is where, this is what's going to be available. You can't go out and buy your flip phone readily now. This is just where the technology's going, and for a lot of really good reasons. But secondly, the, some of the, so while the upfront cost of the meter is higher, the, the meters will be more expensive than just, you know, an old-school meter that had a mechanical reading, basically had a wheel in this inside that would read and turn knobs. Some of the benefits, though, help offset, so ultimately, the rate payer ends up paying for the meter, because anything in our system is paid for by the rate payer. But with these meters in particular, with the increased accuracy over time, we actually bill for more of the water that we produce. We don't have as much water loss, because, you know, the real trick, the meter is kind of the cash register of the system. So having it accurately register what somebody's using, and having that not erode over time is actually a financial benefit to the system. And then some of the staff inputs that are then lower, because we don't have somebody having to go out, that, that keeps us from having to add additional staff sooner. As the system grows, you end up having to add staff, staff is expensive, and so that keeps from adding, tapping that additional staff. And then the water savings are also a cost savings, because that's electricity that isn't used to bring water up out of the, out of the aquifer. And so while these costs are higher, there are some ameliorating impacts of the new technology that help really offset some of those costs that we have for those meters.
Okay. And so, long-term, of course, I recognize it's going to be the new thing, the new shiny cool thing that I, I like is, is going to be better. But you're, if I'm understanding what you're saying, over the long-term, it's going to save money for the consumer?
Over the long-term, there are aspects that we will see savings. As far as, will it, will it drive rates lower? Rates aren't generally going lower.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, but, but there are, there are aspects of this that help offset the additional meter cost.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. I, I recognize that, it's not a easy question.
So I'm a big fan of advanced metering infrastructure, on an electrical system and on a water system, I think it's a good thing. So what it looks like is, is this grant for 100,000 for 500 meters, right? And that's over a two-year period.
We'll get Lisa up to talk about that.
Will you talk about the nitty-gritty like that? Okay, so maybe that's not a question for you, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you for sending that in.
Can I ask you one more question, though? I'm sorry to do this to you.
No worries.
Everyone looked at this and thought it was going to be a fast meeting, then I start talking. What are the security provisions from a cybersecurity perspective that we're, are we hoping to increase with this, right? Like, again, with, to be very clear, I am all for this, and I, I see the value of it. I, I think the question just needs to be asked from, you know, ha, having to monitor this from computers, what, you know, are, we're, we're going to have to somehow account for that, right? What, what systems are, are we expecting that? Or is that something that we're just going to, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, is that, what's the conversation been around that topic?
Yeah, they are, that, we, we're asking as well for a, a more secure application through a hosted platform, which, which allows, which allows for them to, you know, the, whatever the metering manufacturer that we do decide to go with, them running a hosted platform, having the top, you know, top security on that, on that meter data management system. It's, it's really just collecting those components of it, and then feeding it back. And so then it comes back to the, you know, the city's, the ability to maintain, you know, our security on that end. We are on the evaluation committee, going to have our IS department involved to be able to make that selection.
That's all I need to hear.
Yeah, because I am not an expert on, on these security.
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
You do cybersecurity on the side, Evan?
I do not.
Aw, you do.
I will assure we have somebody involved on that.
Yeah, perfect, that's all I need to hear, thank you.
Gina?
Okay, Lisa, I think it's your turn.
Did you have something there, Julia?
I'm, I, it was answered, thank you.
So my question is, and, and I may be just a good segue from the technical to the financial, but it looks to me, and, and I, there is a question here, I promise, $100,000 for these 500 meters, and the beginning of, of some sort of platform, correct?
So, the way this grant falls, we're going to be in year two of what Evan's presented. So year one has preliminary components, the communication data, and doing some testing to make sure everything's going to work right. Year two is where we'll purchase a bulk of 500 meters. And it just so happens that, with this grant being, the award date is March 31st, 2025, and we have two years to install those meters. It fell pretty much in line with the second year of what was proposed in the plan that Evan is asking for.
Well, it, it says here, the second year of the project will be the beta initial deployment phase.
Yes.
So, so we're going to buy these 500 and deployment, and deploy them in the same year, and...
Two years.
Two years, with our, with our app, or whatever it is, the, the...
Okay, so, I'm, can we back up just a little bit?
Only if it answers my question.
It will, I promise you. So, um, city staff will install. So we're purchasing the meters, and city staff will install. So this is a 50% match. So we're looking at that year-two project being approximately 225,000 dollars. And so we'd have 50% match minimum. We will probably end up putting in 125,000, but they only will match up to 100,000 under the small-scale grant program, and that is the one that's coming up for this next round. There is a program that's larger, and we may decide to look at that for our year three and four. The application for that is this fall, but we're not there yet. This is our first opportunity to fund the purchase of those meters for year two.
Okay, so then, so then the decision will be made at, after year, so we deploy for two years. So that's essentially year three then, in the grant, or, or the way this small meter grant would work, small. So then, then we decide if we want to jump to the larger grant, because we, what criteria would we use at that point? We want to deploy faster, bigger?
The pools are larger money, and if we were to be awarded a larger project, then we may be able to do the installation sooner. We may be able to hire the installation out. Where we're kind of stepping back right now is, these, the responses to the proposals are due on the 21st of this month, and so we're not sure what those costs are going to look like yet. And so, but we do know this opportunity is here and now, and it's less competitive than the larger opportunity, which goes up to 1 million or 5 million, depending upon a lot of different factors. And that application is due in September. By then, we'll know what years three and four are going to look like, and what our costs are. We know what's planned in the, the CIP at that point. So we're taking advantage of this first opportunity now. And if we were awarded one of the larger projects, if we apply in September, the award is going to be about a year and a half later, and you have so much time, so we could possibly implement with years three and four, or five, whatever. And there's usually two periods of... And there's usually two periods of applications per year for the larger grants and then the small-scale grants.
So March and September.
July is the due date, and then September is the due date for the larger projects.
Okay.
Lot of information to take in.
How, estimate, what size is this project? To have it completely implemented, how big is this project?
Three million.
Three million, yeah.
Okay.
I, I have one more question.
Julia, yes.
If we get, sorry, maybe for everybody. I don't know who's going to answer this. We get 500 installed and we never get any more money. Can we stop? Can we just be like, okay, the rest of the households are going to have traditional meters, we're going to have these 500 fancy meters?
We, we.
Or are we going to have to keep, are we stuck spending money that we're not getting?
I mean, our plan is to replace all meters with these meters, with their radio reads. So this is just an early start to get a selection of the meter we'd like to use to get those first 500 installed, to learn how they operate, make sure it functions. But the plan in the capital improvement plan long-term in the water utility is to replace all meters with radio reads.
Regardless of grant money.
Correct. We will pursue grant money to help with that cost, but we do plan to replace them over the next five years.
Okay, thanks. Sorry if you had to get up.
And I will just share that, and maybe Councilmember Davis, this new technology, I mean, and this program, the Bureau of Reclamation, it's mainly for the western states, Midwest to western. Lots of cities are being awarded around us and are already implementing these systems. Even Cascade has gotten an award and they've implemented Walla Walla. So if you look at the Bureau of Reclamation website and you look at the different projects, it's not, it's something that everyone's moving to right now. And it's going to be difficult to even buy or replace those old meters that we have right now.
Right.
So we've kind of, we're a little bit behind a lot of the, of our sister cities around us. A lot of people have already started doing this. Holman has an application in right now for a large award, and they'll be starting their project this next year too, so.
So long-term, this give us an advantage, save some money and to get ahead of the program as, because we know where technology's moving that way.
Right. And with the leak detection and the better monitoring, you know, it's much better. We're saving more money, saving water from the aquifers that are depleting. So it's, it's, you know, a very good system with where we are with the aquifers and for planning with P-back and those types of things, so.
Yeah, that's great. Thank, thank you so much for this.
I move that we approve to submit a grant, grant application for $100,000 to the Water Smart Small-Scale Water Efficiency Program.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Mr. Mayor, I, I've been unusually, unusually quiet on this topic. And I'm sorry, Mia, I didn't think of this until right now. I am going to abstain from this vote. SEL does do metering solutions. It, we, it tends to be geared towards power systems, but they're multi-use. So I'm just going to zip it and abstain as we are an employee-owned company. If for some reason SEL went to bid for it, I would potentially stand the game financially. So I'm just going to, so I'm abstaining. Plan it extra, extra, extra safe.
Okay. Motion and seconded. So Bryce.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Julia.
Aye.
Okay. Apply for that grant.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elisa, to Evan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler.
Okay, that's the end of the regular agenda. At this point, we're into reports. Gina, go first.
Sandra, I will be Sandra this evening. I, so last, last month, the Tree Commission canceled their meeting, and so it's been just kind of a blur, I'll admit. I did get to go to the Habitat for Humanity Restore Grand reopening and ribbon cutting. And it has been a long time since I've done a ribbon cutting, and dang it, it was fun. I got to, I got to be there on behalf of the city and, and thank them for growing belief, get this, from one employee in a dark back room to 12 employees and two more openings coming soon. It is a huge deal, and they are really not only taking care of us, but then they're employing our people too. So I, it was a great event, and we got to cut some ribbon, and it was awesome. I also, before that, the week prior, got to go to the, it's, I don't know if it's like every other month, the, the city-county university lunch, where the leaders all get together and, and talk. And it was, it was protracted, or not protracted, it was cut short for me because I needed to get back to attend a meeting. But it was nice to sit down at a lunchtime instead of the seven o'clock crack of dawn meeting. But it was nice to, to get in a room and, and find the commonalities and, and just kind of listen. It's funny how we live in the same community and our, our problems can be very diverse, but in the end, they kind of boil down to the same, the same problems that we're all working on from different aspects. So it was good. And then it was uneventful when I got to be acting mayor. So.
Good.
Yeah, I was, it was very good. So that's all I have.
Gina, I mean Sandra.
Man, if I get to be Gina, my shoe collection got a lot better. I'm super happy to report that I went on my first vacation since 2007, and I have no reports to give.
Nice. Good for you.
Very good. Julia.
In the last couple of weeks, I had the Farmers Market Commission. It's great to see that commission hard at work. They, they have this slogan, you know, farmers markets don't just happen. And it's true, because they are actually going out to the region, to farms that sell at the market to do site visit, to make sure they have safe practices and safe food handling. It's a lot more than just signing up a bunch of vendors to come to the market. So it's really great to see all the work that they do. And they are out and about doing those farm visits right now. No, not right now, but you know, during the summer, when things are growing. I also.
Oh, you might mention vote for the Farmers Market.
No, but I can't remember that. Do you know the URL?
Then go to the city's website.
Okay, go, go to the city. Thank you. I was gonna, yeah, Amanda would never forgive me.
Aye.
Please vote for the Moscow Farmers Market. You can go to the city's website, and there's a link there. So you can vote for Moscow to gain their rightful place as the best farmers market in Idaho at least, but probably in the Northwest.
The world.
The world.
The world.
The world.
The universe.
Of course, we had Public Works and Finance, so we can stay on top of what's happening in the city. And I got to go to high school graduation for Moscow High School. It was very, very nice graduation ceremony, and great to see all those young people making through high school and get launched on to the future, including two lovely children, Indigo and Antonia. And that is it for me.
Okay. Drew.
Yeah, I also attended the U of I Combined County City U of I Lunch Meeting. Great meeting. Always look forward to that. And I definitely like the time on this one a little bit better. So, but, you know, swapping breakfast for lunch is okay, in my opinion, but I'll be at the next breakfast one. Appreciate everyone that comes up to that. Parks and Rec, a couple of things. So our HERC, it turned 20 years old. And so I was serving root beer floats with lots of other Parks and Rec staff and people, and individuals on the commission. And once we made the announcement to the pool, we went through, geez, I think we went through eight gallons of ice cream and 16-liter, two-liter bottles of root beer in 20 minutes. So we had to go back for a round two, and we got rid of most of that within the next hour and a half. But people were excited. I think it was a great Kirby Johnson, new manager of the rec is, I think, really doing some great work and really happy with some of these great ideas that are coming out. For pathways, the bike tour over by Mountain View Park did not happen unfortunately, because we did not have full quorum. But it was nice to talk to members of the community about pathways and enjoyed some light refreshments. And then just as a reminder for the public, our art walk finale is happening this Thursday.
Twenty years.
Yeah. And so 20 years, and so a lot of things are happening 20 years this month. But, yeah, finale, so come down downtown and enjoy some art and Moscow culture. Thank you.
Bryce. Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Pretty light on my end. Attended Planning and Zoning last week. Pretty short meeting. Main topic of discussion was talking about the buffer yard requirements within the zoning code. So I talked for, for about 20 minutes or so. And then there is a Human Rights Commission meeting tomorrow, which I will be absent for. But I do want to remind the community that the Human Rights Commission is, is helping sponsor and put on an event with other collaborators on Wednesday, which is Juneteenth. And I believe it's happening down at Friendship Square, but the time is escaping me.
It's noon.
Yeah.
Starts at noon.
Yeah. So, and that's, that's noon on Wednesday. Thank you. And then the other thing to bring to your attention with regards to the Human Rights Commission is on Saturday, the 29th, the Human Rights Commission will be tabling at the market. And then also that night is Diva Night for Reproductive Rights, which will be at the Kenworthy at 7:00. So those are the two commission meetings. And then the other thing that I was up to this weekend is for the first time, I participated in the Corner Club Open Golf Tournament. Tremendously windy on Saturday, really unpleasant. Sunday was really great. And it was fun to be out there with about 150 other golfers, just enjoying, enjoying the Palouse. So, yeah. Haley.
Uh, yeah, Bike Monthly Lunch was great. Lots of good discussion. And then zipped over to Greg.
Morrison.
I was going to say Mattinson and Brain said, that's not it. Morrison's retirement party after 18 years directing Parks and Rec. And it was lovely to send him off. And, you know, he got emotional, and as anyone would, and, you know, he'll be missed. He hired me at the HERC when I worked there in college, and got to sling some root beer floats and haul some tables around for the HERC's 20th birthday celebration. And, yeah, headed to Boise for Association of Idaho Cities Meetings tomorrow through the end of the week. And so I'm missing Art Walk, which I'm actually really, 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 it's going to haunt me, and Juneteenth activities. So please, people go in my stead. And I, I think that's it. Smart Transit meets Wednesday, even though it's a holiday, it works best for everybody. I feel like I had, oh, and I don't know if it's appropriate, and I don't know if, if Cody and Bill, I think it'd be great if, if Kirby's able to come during open comment, one of the next couple of months of meetings, just introduce herself. I'm clearly very, I'm a big Kirby fan. It was a bouillie. She left SEL to come work at Parks and Rec. And so I know Kirby, but I'd love, I'm excited for us all to get to know her. So I don't know if we want to extend an invitation and have her stop by and introduce herself. So that was my last thing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. For me, I was out of town this last week. Two consecutive family reunions, Iowa and Michigan. I survived. Do want to mention that August 9th is the mayor's golf tournament again this year. So everybody out there, think about putting together your foursomes. Some are clearly better than other foursomes. I look forward to finishing in the last place with my team of honest politicians again this year.
You didn't last year, Mr. Mayor.
I know. It was sad.
I could help you out with that.
Oh, I love the volunteers. Anything from staff?
Nothing this evening.
Okay. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.